Of the agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second, all in favor. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Approval of minutes from the October sixth, twenty twenty five meeting.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion, second to approve the minutes, all in favor. Aye.
All of them.
Good call Stephanie. Um, item number one opioid settlement. Fund committee funding requests Maggie, good morning, you might need to turn that mic on.
Morning Maggie.
Should be on, okay. So yeah, our opioid.
Is it on?
I think so, it's loaded up.
Okay.
Yeah. Our committee met last Wednesday, we had three applications from Manning Regional Healthcare Center, County Ambulance Service and New Opportunities, and we should all have copy of those applications. Of the three, we decided to fund all three of them, so I'll just go over each one and just give you a brief synopsis, and if there's any questions I have to answer. So for Manning Regional Healthcare Center, they are applying for twenty eight thousand five hundred forty nine dollars. And we chose as a committee to fully fund that request with for a hidden in plain sight. Um, so what that is, is um, kind of an immersive experience that parents, teachers, law enforcement, probably anybody can go through and try and identify where um, teen and adults are concealing opioid dates, alcohol, things like that. Um, there is one other trailer in the state and then take it. Representative from Manning Regional who applied for the funds, there's um, a healthcare organization in the state that has a dedicated room or hospital or facility that is the same um, given insight initiative. So that would cover their trailer, their. The setting up of the trailer and then bringing it around the. Yeah, to that was for twenty eight thousand five hundred forty nine. And then the application from Carol County Ambulance Service, they had applied for eighty four thousand eight hundred fifty five dollars and seventy cents. As a committee, we chose to fund fifty five thousand two hundred fifty seven dollars and seventy cents, and the difference there um, on page three or four of the application, you'll see their budget listed out by item. Um, that first item for the striker life pack at fifty ninety thousand, as a committee, we chose to fund that at fifty percent, so that would've been twenty nine thousand five hundred and seventy seven dollars, eighty nine cents. And then the other three budget items were chosen to be fully funded, so that's where you get the difference there. And I feel like Jamie talked, he's got more information to share, but.
So what was the total, fifty five thousand?
Fifty five thousand two hundred fifty seven dollars, seventy seven.
I mean, I guess I'll ask a question, um, and thank you for your committee for taking the time and and I know this was a lot to ask, but obviously we've been waiting and wanting these funds to go to preventative measures. How do you feel that this fits this role?
Just like for the ground running.
Nope, just uh, obviously I am all behind the trailer, I think that's a wonderful idea, that's really preventative, that's getting into the hands of the kids and trying to stop the problem before it starts. How do you feel that this one?
So the opioid funds are supposed to use for prevention, they only treat it. So I see the Manning Initiative as prevention, and I see the New Opportunities Initiative as prevention. If I can let Jamie talk.
Yeah.
knowledgeable about.
It's that I am. But yeah, we really just wanted to make sure we had all three of those bases covered. And yes, it will be able to treat opioid related incidences, but I mean, rather than spending county tax dollars on it, we can spend the opioid funds on it.
With the life pack thirty five specifically, um, kind of rationale.
Will you introduce yourself, please?
My name's Jamie Webkin.
Thank you.
Um, the rationale for the fifty percent was that it is used to treat or to monitor patients that are in a crisis of any kind or 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 bid related crisis. But ultimately for these opioid crisis incidents, it gives us better feedback, uh, more accurate feedback. You know, pretty much every opioid overdose has respiratory compromise or or respiratory infections, and this has the capability of of monitoring that and giving us these aspects of this better thing. Um, like we kind of talked in the meeting, we we did talk a lot about this subject. The county attorney said that it did fit, um, like she said, it's more the treatment where, you know, they save lives, the other two things are saving lives, fire, where we're saving lives, you know, we have various benefits.
Okay.
If you look on this pages, also talk to the location for using MS funds.
There's numerous that are using the these funds for the same thing, some are using them for for ambulances or portions of the ambulance. But I I guess kind of like I explained in the in the meeting, I plan to go for different things to every time we we have the capability or the opportunity to do that. You know, rather than utilizing taxpayer funds, when the opportunities like this come up, it's good to to try to get things like this for that.
Okay. Thanks Jamie.
And I should back up, um, we have two hundred thousand dollars in the opioid fund CD that matures next Monday. Um, and we have a hundred and thirty two thousand dollars, this is for everybody's information, um, sitting just in a bank account right now.
So a hundred and thirty two is available to be distributed.
Okay.
But as of next month, but anyway, there's three hundred and thirty two thousand Carroll County has collected so far.
Okay.
With, I don't know, it kind of, I talked to Scott a little bit on Friday with the the funding portion that they the opioid committee did not fund. I don't know what part of this you want me to come in and chime in on that as far as our request for just basically like a heads up saying, you know, I believe that, you know, at the end of the fiscal year, there'll be some funds left over, otherwise there is an option. Um, what we had, the ambulance that was totaled a couple of years ago, there is some funds that have fallen over into the capital budget for that, so the funds should be there.
And like I say, I told you on Friday, same thing, if toward the end of the fiscal year, a budget amendment is not a sin, I would rather not overtax the taxpayers.
Especially if half of it's being paid for.
Exactly, yeah, to me it's a grant instead of, yes.
Do you have one of those right now?
So, um, we ordered the like this tape monitor for the ambulance is supposed to show up in July, I ordered it early to save the county about fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, but it just showed up months ago, we're doing the training on it, it's going to be implemented this week.
Okay.
So we're going to put it in one of the ambulances because the warranty starts when we receive it, so we need to start using it.
Yep.
Uh, but we need to do training on it because it is, it is quite a bit different. Um, so this one basically, since we're having the training done, it'll it'll get thrown right into the mix.
So you'll have two women in the system.
Yep, we'll have two of them and then the next ambulance order, even the next time that that I can apply for these funds, I'm going to do kind of the same thing.
So when when is that next ambulance coming, beans we're talking?
July, we're we're scheduled to get it after July, that way because of the way it fit with budgeting purposes and stuff for the fiscal year.
Right.
Questions for me?
Not on the striker system.
You have questions on any of the events or anything?
Um, Maggie didn't really cover the new opportunity, did you?
Not yet, no.
Okay.
Get into it.
And then we'll vote on them one by one, but if you can hang around Jamie in case there are more questions or you guys split. You gotta go.
I hope the monitor by nine thirty.
Okay, alright.
I can hang her.
If we can keep Maggie toned down, we should be able to be.
I don't know about that guy, okay, um, yeah, the last request was from New Opportunities, they requested twenty six thousand six hundred and forty dollars, and as committee, we voted to fully fund that. And that would cover care coordination, crisis counseling, community outreach and um, engagement. So the total with.
Wait, now back up.
Yep.
So the new opportunities, the way I understood it from talking to you and Mark, is kind of just a bridge until more federal funding, it's not going to be a year after year request, right?
That's what I understood it as, um, because of their um, new ASOs with the behavioral health redistricting, um, they are getting their funds rather than from the state, which they were previously getting it from, it goes to the district and then to the local entities. Um, and there's been some issues getting the funds and.
What I'm getting at, this is, this is a one time deal, this is not going to be, they're not expecting us to sustain this funding every gene we must weigh in.
There there may be some new programs come available, that'd be all I know, because they are currently getting.
But this is a one time.
They are currently getting some opioid funds. I know what he's concerned about utilizing this with some of the federal funds he's getting. So. I wouldn't say there won't be some requests for some other additional programming. But I I think.
But this, this one.
Probably a one.
It's a one. That's the way I was explaining to me, it was a bridge to get to.
Unless they still continue to have a problem. Which could happen.
So with fully funding Manning Regional's application, opportunities application, and that fifty percent on the one budget item and then a hundred percent of the rest of the budget items for Carroll County Ambulance Service, the total. For funding that was um, approved by our committee and we're recommending to you as our supervisors is a hundred and ten thousand four hundred forty six dollars and seventy cents.
So what questions does the board have? I guess my question is, would we like to vote on these as three separate things or just as one package? From, um.
Let's do three.
Just in case a supervisor does not feel.
That's what.
Part of it is warranted.
So if anybody has no more questions or comments, so um, the opioid settlement fund committee is recommending fifty five thousand two hundred and fifty seven dollars and seventy cents. Go for the striker for the Carroll County ambulance, is there a motion to support that?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. The hidden in plain sight from Manning Regional Healthcare Center, twenty eight thousand five hundred and forty nine dollars.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, a second, any more discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. New opportunities, funding twenty six thousand six hundred and forty dollars, make your motion to approve that.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 I'll update.
So I was waiting for you to say that beforehand, okay. Motion carries. Thank you Maggie, Jamie, your committee, we appreciate it, keep meeting quarterly and um, it looks like there's a balance of two hundred and twenty thousand roughly. Remaining, um, later on in the agenda, we're going to decide whether to renew all of that two hundred thousand dollar that we currently have in ACDS for seven months, Maggie, do you have any input?
Well.
Is seven months too long or should we not put the whole thing in or?
So from the hundred and ten, you have two hundred and twenty available, so leave us with a hundred and ten, I know, um, assuming Jamie will apply again for funds, we'll meet again in January. And I. Assume, I can't guarantee, I have heard we will have another application from the paramedics association, I don't know the dollar amount on that, um, but I'm assuming.
More active, the board again, we'll get to it when we get down here, but maybe we don't want to reinvest the whole thing for seven.
That's up to you, I just, I don't know how much I.
The next side.
Yeah.
We can just move on to it.
Yeah, let's talk about it.
Alright, item number two, discuss opioid CD renewal. Right now, there's two hundred thousand dollars, it matures next Monday, um, if we were to renew it again for seven months, it'd be three point nine five percent interest.
That's for nine months.
Seven months.
Seven months.
But again, we don't have, we can do it for a hundred and fifty thousand, we can, which.
But the thing is, there's always monies coming in too.
There is, right now, with what we just approved, there is twenty three or twenty two thousand left in the regular fund, but yeah, the way it keeps trickling in, we can't predict that.
No.
But I mean, if we did, were to do one fifty, that would leave seventy thousand, that would still be fluid, that could be used at any time, again, they meet quarterly, they're not meeting until January. I've been May, be.
Be up.
I think one fifty sounds like a fair amount to me.
And I think I agree with you.
I would agree with them.
I would agree.
We just renewed a hundred and fifty.
So is there a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, so Lisa, if you're listening, a hundred and fifty thousand, please renew it, if not, I'll touch base with you afterwards. Thank you, thanks Jamie.
Thank you.
Leave the rest of that in the account. Exactly.
Uh, for the ones that were funded, do we need to get an invoice to Courtney? Okay. I I'll just move with her then.
I knew I had another question. Are you having them report back their results so we know if this is getting used properly?
Yep, so that was a part of the agreement for the application, if they're learning funds quarterly, so for the three that we approved by the time we meet in January.
Reporting that back to us too also, good.
Maggie, this might be a little bit late, but can you explain the disciplines that are in your um, in your board, you've got the, go ahead.
Yep, so we're co-chairing, um, we have Jamie with the ambulance, um, Kurt, it's has been wonderful.
County attorney.
Navigate, he said that we have to rely on by federal government. Um, you know, the pharmacist, Adam Paul Roy, um, a nursing instructor, uh, Collette Crouch, she's with D M A, she has an army, she's our individual working with those.
Recovery center from Manning, yeah.
Of course, with lived experience, Ms. Joni Hoffman, um, Ken Binger, if on our board.
I just like the different disciplines that are in it as far as pulling together.
That was like walk years from down there, wasn't it?
It was the best practice, it was Dallas County, I think.
It was pretty good, yeah, I like that.
You're, and that was your follow on Dallas County as well, yeah.
Yeah.
And you're getting good participation and.
Awesome.
You have another from New Opportunities? Is there one other from New Opportunities?
There's not, no, so, um.
I was just thinking, I was thinking that the girl that cried right around the was on it too, but I might be wrong.
At least they're aware of it and they apply and their grant was.
Well, I never, I know they were wanting to do something earlier, but he was, wanted to make sure he wasn't getting crossways the other monies he's getting.
Okay, thanks Maggie.
Thank you.
Alright, so we agree a hundred and fifty thousand to go to the uh, and back into the CD, item number three, secondary roads, Zach, you have a utility permit.
Morning, Zach.
Morning, Zach.
One utility permit for Rockton Valley Electric, um, this is uh. Like in Rapids, uh, basically boring power underneath the road for a uh. Existing home, basically, or for a new, from a existing acreage to a new, new acreage or new home location, so.
That's old acreage by the new home.
Well, I think they're actually building a new home on a new site across the road from what I understand from the picture, I I think that's what's going on.
Alright.
So they're going from kind of where those bins sit there across the road and then going to the.
Northwest.
Correct.
Where?
Correct. So.
Basically on the Audubon County line.
Right north.
Pretty close, just north, yep. So, um, but they'll be crossing the road and then a potential a little bit in our right away, we're working out exactly where they're going because there is utilities down there on that, on Robin Avenue. Um, but uh, don't see any issues with what they're doing, they'll be boring underneath the road like they always do, um, pretty straightforward, I guess, as far as I'm concerned.
Like when they borrowed and they set a box, that's a box that's out right away. Like I said, it's put a new green transformer box.
I don't know if there's a minimum dis- distance on that or not, to be honest, um, I know like if there's, if it's for a. If it would be like a primary line that's underground, they'll actually set it in the right away at the, in the back of the, like by towards the back of the right away, holy cow.
He's got a headache.
What was that?
A bird.
Oh.
Like, just. Anyway.
Anyways.
Look what it did to your lip.
Uh, so so yeah, I don't know if there's a specific distance that it, that it, for when it's a private transformer, but I know there are some that are in the right away.
Seen them, yeah.
Yep.
Otherwise. About this window and you're over there and look what happened to you.
I know, right?
Maybe Jamie should have stuck around.
They uh. Yeah, so there's no, I didn't know.
I I don't know of any, I can do some checking in that, but I I don't think there is any that I know of.
Just curious. We're looking for approval of a utility permit for three, three, five, eight, six, Robin Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second, all in favor. Aye, aye, opposed, motion carries. Next, you have a drain at two hundred, around two hundred and tenth at Sycamore.
Yes, this be just west of Glidden, um, had a call come in for a hole out in the field, um.
Which drain is this again, sorry?
This is drain twenty nine. And. Believe it's somewhere, it's in uh, section twenty five there. Um, like I said, just be just west of the.
Twenty five of grand.
What was that?
Twenty five of grand.
Thank you.
To me, Sycamore and Two Ten.
It's the the holes on, I believe on the twenty inch line, close to where that ten inch line comes in, so we have not done the repair work on this yet, but. Hopefully should be a, a simple fix, so.
We're looking for a motion to.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion, second to approve the drain, all in favor, aye, aye, opposed, motion carries.
Have you seen like an uptick in these hours, I mean, I was having one of them on here for years, is these child repairs like constant like this?
Um, they go in waves, I mean, really with moisture, I mean, you you get a, you get dry years and you don't see as many generally, but you see, what are yours, you usually see more.
And now your crops are going off, so people are seeing them.
Usually it's really spring and fall is the main times when you see them.
But I still don't feel like it's been real busy, I've, we've had worse years.
I was gonna say, a couple of years ago, there was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's definitely not.
Over dams and whatever, yeah.
Right, it's, it it all, it ebbs and flows a little bit, um, part of it's, um, how many do we have repairs, do we have inside some of the city limits where the drains are as well, those seem to cause. A little more headache and a little more time to get some of those addressed, but um, overall, I I think uh, it's been. Not, not a crazy amount for the amount of moisture we've had, I guess, is what I'll say.
Okay, item number C, department update.
Um, just a couple of things, uh, the box on three hundred street, um, that did get completed, um.
I believe we're paying for that today too, aren't we?
You are, uh, that one and three twentieth, both I believe are are in the bills, so I believe that's paying the contractor for basically all the work minus the retainage, so. Um, I believe they, both the fences have been put back and I believe they've both been seeded, so I think we're kind of just. Kind of babysitting the 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 granular surfacing, making sure it's going to hold up alright and whatnot, but for the most part, complete, so. Um, they went well, um, a little bit of weather, moisture in between there and between the first one and the second one, but uh, overall, uh, went went well. Uh, other updates, uh, Templeton Shed, we're working diligently on that, I believe they got raptors set last week, so uh, now we'll be on to steel, um, I. Not sure that that's going to be here this week, uh, I believe beginning of next week, so we'll get, keep moving on that as as that goes forward, so. But uh, so far, so good there. And then uh, last uh, item, uh, working on getting uh, a job description and ad put together for weed commissioner. Um, uh, our previous weed commissioner did retire, and Tony retired, um, he's. Ready to spend more time with grandkids and everything else, I think, so. Um, we're going to be looking for one of those, what I'd like to do is. Is uh, we had a full time person before, Tony was a full time person, I'd like to continue that full time person, but what I'd like to do is have it be a part time mechanic. And a part time weed commissioner, that way we're able to, especially in the winter time, be able to have all hands on deck, to be able to keep, keep up with things, um, I feel like we're um. Kind of maintaining, but we're not getting ahead on things and some of the maintenance and things like that, so I think having an extra set of hands for that would be beneficial, so. That's kind of the path we're looking to go down, so. That's really all I got.
Any other questions for Zach? Thanks Zach. Item number four, approved special class C retail alcohol license, Cloud Wine LLC. And the address they list is one, six, six, two, four, one hundred and twentieth street in Brita, and the five day period between November twenty one and November twenty five.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
We have a motion, second to approve special class C retail alcohol license, Cloud Wine LLC, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Prove payables, eight hundred and one thousand four hundred eighty six dollars and one cent. And a. Couple of hundred grand was the box culprits that just described. They may have questions on payables.
I had one question, we got it answered, so. If nothing, if no one else has a question, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion. I'll update. And a second. For uh, payables of eight hundred and one thousand four hundred eighty six dollars and one cent, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. One of system. Item number six, Von Brokern and Associates Retirement, um, I did get a letter from Renee and. Uh, a phone call, and she is going to um, retire at the end of the year, so if the ambulance votes to retain, the union, we're going to need somebody for that, and. This is more, um, not looking for action, but just information to make a public that uh, I mean, she's been working with several departments on HR issues and.
So she's been our HR person too.
Yes, so yes. But so as far as finances, we've already paid her for the first half of the year, the um, fiscal year, and her and Courtney, um. We paid for the first half of the ambulance and she's saying that that basically will cover her till the end of the year. And I know of three departments that she's worked with, um, on personnel quite regularly, but she, um, I think she might have somebody she wants to recommend, but um, we can put it on a. Probably November timeframe agenda.
I would suggest that we um, ask who she would recommend.
Okay.
There are some people.
I'll reach out to her.
There are some people that feel I would not recommend.
She started to recommend one to me and then I told her I didn't want to hear it because I wanted to hear what the board thought first.
Personally, I I I wish her the best, but uh, I hate losing her, she's been very good.
She was a plethora of knowledge, yes, yeah.
Been very good for the county.
I didn't realize she was, oh, it's right, she was.
By herself.
By herself.
I'll reach out to her and see who her recommendation is and then maybe we can line up, um, either have that person come here or give us a quote for the same type um, services. Because Renee, basically, no matter how many times you called her, it was still the same flat fee of, I think it was sixty eight hundred bucks a year.
Yeah.
I do think that we. Get her recommendation and reach out to another one or try to get another.
Absolutely. I think we should all network a little bit and see who other counties use, obviously, it's not a full time position for a hundred employees in Carroll County, but. Okay, so that was just.
Well, and and some people have uh, their attorney does negotiations too, but I think a lot of attorneys do, do not want to do that because of the sheriffs that unionize. Then they're kind of defeating their purpose far as getting knowledge when they have a. Base.
Yep. Like I said, yeah, well, just everybody can put their feelers out and see what we can come up with, but I think by years end, we need to make a decision sometime, and we'll need um, a union negotiator, doesn't have to be the same person either, we can have a separate HR and union. Okay, um, item number seven, November meeting dates, um, I thought we should put this on here because um. It's assumed we meet every Monday, the Monday before elections, usually the board does not meet, um, because the auditor's office is usually fairly busy. So there'll be no meeting on November third and November tenth. November eleventh is Veterans Day, so there'll be nobody working that day, so our first meeting in the, in November will be on the twelfth, where we'll canvass the election and do regular business. So anybody with time sensitive materials, they need to have, um, they need to be on the agenda Monday, October twenty seventh, whether it's a plat, a liquor license, whatever, just a a heads up that we will not be meeting. That makes sense to everybody or anybody have questions on that?
Okay, so we'll meet on the twelfth and then.
And then go back to the regular, the seventeenth. But I think, since I've been on the board five years and I believe every Monday before an election, we do not have a meeting, and it's never a bill day because bill days are usually the second and fourth Monday.
It's been that way the last couple of years.
Okay. I've been on the board a couple of years, I'm not an old timer. I've been on the board a couple of years. I'm not an old timer. Maneuver management updates. Bob Danner, section twenty-two, Newton Township, uh, changes. Cornerstone Partnership, section twelve, Richland Township, no changes. Hensite, section one, Lincoln Township, Audubon County. No change, or I'm sorry, um, change crop rotation or optimum yields, use manure analysis. Item number nine, committee reports.
And go. Last week was pretty quiet. I had Republican meeting on Monday. This week I have, uh. Conservation at three thirty today and that is it on my schedule. Thank you.
Do you want to mention the opening at conservation? Office manager or, I mean, I saw it on Facebook.
Yeah, they, they posted and we're going to talk about it tonight, but there is an opening for office manager there. Jesse. Is moving to the courthouse, so. She's not invited to be an office manager. To the public, reach out. Apply.
I can go next. Um, last week, I obviously was not at the meeting. I was, um, sick, still sick, but. I did have. Region twelve last week, um, and I attended the. Executive Board meeting and the RDC. And I did not stay for the policy council, but I know Scott was there, um. We did standard business stuff, um, naming our depositories, which is the same for every year, and then we did approve checks written. Um, I didn't really have any questions on those because I actually signed all those checks. This week I have newspaper radio. And. I think that is it.
Hey, I know, last week, Monday, I had newspaper radio, so Gene, we're playing leapfrog next week, yes. Um, Tuesday, I did go down to, uh, Manning Rotary, listened to, uh, Debbie Durham speak. Um. And then Tuesday, also, there was a chamber after hours at Starlight Lanes, the new, uh, the bowling alley under new ownership, got a new facelift. Very nice inside. Um, Wednesday morning, we had.
That bad bull. You, I've seen that bad bull you had on Facebook.
Yeah, I wanted twenty-five dollar gift certificate. Um, Wednesday, we had a meeting for the recruitment director for, uh, at the landfill to replace the director. Um, I also Wednesday looked at secondary roads payables and then Wednesday night was a forward adjustment and they did approve. Um, the right away, Zach, they said you were okay with it for Kirk Branning. On, uh, I think it was on two hundred and thirtieth. Yeah.
Hey, on the landfill, do you get a point or do you, do you?
We will be hired.
Apply, it's a application.
It's, it's posted in many places and there also is some recruitment going on from other, um. Subject matter experts in that field.
Yeah, is it hard to find?
Um, people that want to move to Iowa aren't necessarily, or people that have kids already established in schools or whatever, but, um. And Mary has given us no hard date, the current director. And, um, I think it's going to be a several month transition, depending on who the new applicant is. But there's a lot going on with Ames coming here and new cell development. And so I think she might, um, stay on and, and help with.
Training and stuff, yeah. That's good.
Yeah, and we, so far, there are some good candidates.
How long has Mary been there?
Um, I think she's close to forty years. Like, he started as a, uh, scale operator.
Wow.
Yeah. Homegirl. Yeah, she's a long time. Um, Thursday, I did go out, secondary roads, talked with Zach about many things, um. And Thursday night, region twelve, call, policy council, which Stephanie ended at, um, nothing really new there. Friday courthouse payables, and then there was a, a chamber coffee at DMAC hosted by the Carroll County Fraud Coalition. Um, I didn't realize Iowa had so many aging people. We're right up there toward the top and Carroll County is toward the top of Iowa. I didn't realize that, but evidently fraud, um, yeah, is a big deal. This week, um, tonight is Carroll City Council. This afternoon, I will call Renee, get some recommendation or get her recommendation. Um, for a possible replacement. Tomorrow morning, executive board meeting at the landfill. Wednesday, um, this isn't. Necessarily a committee assignment or duty, but early in-person voting starts. Just a heads up to everybody that, uh. Can vote at the courthouse, early in-person, starting Wednesday. That's all I have.
Okay, beans, I'm the old guy. I'll go last.
Who said that?
Uh, I did on Tuesday, went to Manning to the Rotary with Debbie Durham. I thought it was very inform, informative meeting. And then on Thursday, uh, the CCGP.
Going to be tough to replace.
Yes.
She is a ball of fire and I think she's going to stick out the next fifteen months, but.
Well, she said that.
Okay, yeah.
Did you hear that?
Yep.
Yeah, she's.
But it's, yeah.
She's going to retire when governor retired. Um. CCGP executive, uh, board meeting on Thursday was canceled and then Thursday I attended the Highway Thirty conference call. Uh, basically, there's nothing new there except that the, uh, road that treat west of Audien is complete. Uh, and that is finished. Um, then on Thursday also, I took care of a Mount Carmel. There was a question on a bill from Mount Carmel. I was going to call you on this, I didn't get around to it. In regard to sewer system that there's been repeated, there were bills there, so I did call the operator and talk to him and. He said they've had issues with this, but they kept trying to baby the pump along and now the pumps went up so high, but they had to replace it. So that's why it's gotten so extensive, but they did not see it as any abnormal usage or misuse of the system, so. I was good to follow up on that. Uh, this week I don't have a lot, but I have Friday is this center board meeting. And that's my week for this.
Any comments or questions from those attendants? Emily, next week? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, nine thirty-seven.